Good evening and welcome to the City of Auburn Study Session, October 24, 2022. Call this meeting to order. This evening's meeting is being held virtually and in person. Hannah, will you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor Jay Raj.
I'm here.
Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Malinga.
Here.
Councilmember Stern.
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Excused. Hannah, do we have any agenda modifications?
Yes, Chair, we do. We are going to be moving Ordinance Number 6883, the Utility Rate Amendment Presentation, to the first item on the agenda, due to it being an outside presenter.
Thank you, Hannah. So, we will now move to the Finance, Technology, Economic Development Discussion Items, and I will turn this over to Chair Bob Baggett.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Well, tonight, we have about five proposed ordinances, all dealing with finance, and the first one is Utility Rate Adjustment. Ordinance Number 8, I'm sorry, 6883 is a Utility Rate Amendment Presentation. I believe that's going to be by FCS.
Yes, thank you. I'm actually going to ask our Financial Planning Manager, Frank Downard, to come up and introduce our presenter for the evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Frank Downard. I am the City's Financial Planning Manager. Tonight, first up, we have the Presentation Two of Three of the City's Utility Rates Study. Previously, as you may recall, we focused on the city's utility revenue requirements. Tonight's focus will be the Cost of Service Analysis. We have previously contracted with FCS Group to do our utility rate consulting, and here to present the results of the Cost of Service Analysis is Sergey from FCS Group.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Can everybody hear me okay? Well, and thank you for taking the time to meet with me this afternoon to go over the results of the cost-to-service update portion of the overall rate study process. Before we get into the discussion itself, just wanted to provide you with a brief outline of the presentation. We're going to begin by talking about the background, just a quick refresher in terms of what we have done to date, what we've done last time. We'll talk about the overall rate study process itself, just to keep it fresh in everybody's mind. I know we had a first presentation done on October 10th, but it has been some time, so just wanted to do a quick refresher in terms of what goes into a full study, and then we'll dive right in, talking about the cost of service, focusing on each of the three utilities for the water, sewer, and stormwater utilities. Feel free to ask questions as we go along. So, a quick reminder, refresher, last time we completed a comprehensive study such as this one for the city was in 2018. At that point, we did identify that rates at that level were not sufficient to meet the ongoing obligations, and we did develop a four-year rate strategy to help rates to support their obligations on the next four-year cycle, which in fact ended in 2022. We also evaluated equity between customer classes from an interclass allocation perspective, and we did see that there were some differences that needed to be addressed. So, as part of that four-year strategy, we did develop a phase-in that helped get classes towards their cost allocation, and then again, as Frank mentioned, that will be the focus of our discussion today, that second step of the analysis. Finally, on the rate design front, we wanted to align our cost-based rates with how we're actually charging our customers, so minor modifications were made to the fixed and variable charges to align with cost causation. So, to update the study, we began in February of this year, 2022. We've been working with your staff in quite a bit of detail to update the analysis and met with you on the 10th to go over the preliminary findings. Now, the next slide, on Slide Four, what you should notice are just the findings that we presented on October 10th. Again, this is same information, no changes have been made. Here, what we're trying to do are just high-level summaries of the overall strategies that we proposed on the 10th for each of the utilities, so I'll briefly go over each table. At the top, we're looking at the water utility. The proposal was on October 10th, an annual increase of about seven and a half percent. We're focusing here on the next three-year period, just because there's so much uncertainty, especially with inflation right now. We are projecting beyond that point, but because of the uncertainty, trying to focus on the shorter time period of the three years, 23 through 25. Now, that seven and a half percent increase, from an average perspective, looking at a typical residential home, which currently uses six CCF per month, currently pays about almost $40. With the proposed increases, we were looking at $3 per month, per year increase in the first year, and then up to $3.46 per month, per year, with that final seven and a half percent in that three-year period. In the middle table, we're looking at the sewer utility. You'll notice that the sewer proposal is split between the local portion, the City of Auburn's portion, and there's in the middle a King County portion, because King County does provide treatment to the city's waste through a wholesale agreement. Here, we're simply focusing on that portion that the city has some control over, which is the Auburn portion of the table. Here, we are also proposing seven and a half percent increases, which translate to approximately $1.95 to $2.25 per month, per year, for a typical residential customer. And finally, in the third table down below, the sample impact for the stormwater utility. Here, we proposed a six-and-three-quarter percent adjustment, which translated to about $1.7 to $1.22 per month, per year, for a typical customer. And then the next slide, we showed a combined impact. If it's challenging to see the color differentials, here we see the existing rates for all three utilities for a typical home are in the middle at $131.10, right in the middle of the comparative list. I always want to caution to you that these are a little bit of apples and oranges comparisons, because each utility is designed differently. Each utility may own or have somebody else performing the treatment for them, as well policy decisions are made separately. So, again, a little bit of apples and oranges, and being in the business, I know that a lot of these folks are going through similar rate studies as the city is. So, with that, now let's switch gears and focus on the update for today's discussion. Just do a quick refresher of the overall rate setting process steps themselves. Here, we've condensed the study into three key analytical steps that have to be performed sequentially. We have to start from Step One, go through Step Two, and finish with Step Three. Typically, we would not start by showing you the proposed rates until we get the overall increases in place. So, Step Number One, which we covered on the 10th, really focuses on the big-picture need. What do we need from our ongoing rates from a big picture without diving into too much detail where the revenue is coming from to support our ongoing obligations? And it has to be on a standalone basis, meaning that the water utility is covering water, sewers covering sewer, and stormwater, stormwater. There's no crossutility subsidization occurring. Step Number Two dives a little bit deeper and looks at equity between customer classes. Are current classes paying their allocated share of costs? So, if you think of Step One as identifying the size of the pie of costs, Step Two is really focusing on, well, how big should each slice of that pie be for each class of service? And that'll be the focus today. And then finally, we'll be back again for that last step, the rate design, which actually develops that communication tool to your customers, the fixed and the variable charges assessed on a monthly basis. So, now, let's focus on cost of service. As I just mentioned, really, the purpose of this analysis is to answer the fundamental question of, do cost differences exist to provide service to customer classes? When developing the analysis, we do rely on industry standards and practices for cost allocation for utilities, but we do use the city-specific data, usage data, planning data, engineering, and sizing information to develop and update the study. Now, in addition to the interclass cost allocation that we're identifying through this step, we're also developing the cost-based unit costs, which will then drive that last step, the third step, rate design. Oh, sure. Yeah, in addition to that cost allocation answer that we're going to get, the analysis provides us with cost-based unit costs. So, it tells us how much we should charge from a fixed perspective, on a monthly perspective, versus the volume perspective, and it gives us a cost basis to do so. Now, in terms of the technical component of the cost of service, we've condensed it into three analytical steps as well. First step is really about grouping our expenses into alike categories. We call it functionalization of costs, development of cost pools, but really, it's just grouping categories into alike, similar groups. Now, I'll be going over each of these functions or groups in a couple of seconds or minutes as we get into each individual utility, but here you can see the water expenses were grouped into five key categories, sewer expenses into two key categories, and stormwater expenses into three separate categories as well. Once we have done that, we go through the process of developing allocation factors by looking at historical and projected usage information and billing data, and then finally, taking that data, we apply those allocation factors to the groups and develop the results. So, now, let's start the discussion with the water utility first. Here, you can see the summary of that grouping analysis, the functionalization or classification step of the cost of service. That's Step One at the top, summarized in that pie chart. Here, you can see it's made up of the functions or groups, starting with the customer cost group component of the revenue requirement, which represents approximately 4% of your total revenue requirements based on our updated analysis. And what this group represents are costs that are fixed in nature. They don't really change with the size of the customer. I kind of like to use an example of postage or sending a bill to our customer, for those folks who still receive a paper bill. It doesn't really matter how big the customer is, if it's an industrial customer, or how small they are, a residential customer. It costs the same to purchase an envelope and send postage along to them. So, again, this matters the level of usage. Meters and service costs, are those costs related to the actual installation, the maintenance, and replacement of the meters themselves? So, if a customer is larger, such as a commercial customer or an industrial customer, they may have meter sizes of four inches or above. Those meters cost more, therefore, cost in this cost pool will be more expensive and heavier allocated to customers that have bigger meters. Base costs are those costs that are related to sizing the system for average conditions. Throughout the year, if we avoid peaking needs or fire suppression needs to fight fires, we may size our system quite a bit smaller than we do today, just because to provide peak services, we need to oversize just in case we need to use the infrastructure. But for average conditions, the system would be smaller. So, we try, through cost-of-service principles, we identify what portion of your expenses are related for that average sizing, which here represent about almost 49% of total cost, so pretty substantial amount of expenditures and allocated based on typically average usage or total consumption from our individual customer groups. Peak costs are related to those costs to oversize the system for that peak event. It could be a peak day during the summertime, usually for water utilities, or peak month. Here, we're looking at oversizing of all the infrastructure, including our pipes in the ground, distribution transmission pipes. We just have to get them bigger to meet that peak event. We are looking at more or bigger booster pump stations, as well as bigger storage tanks, just to meet that peak demand. And what's important to note here is that a lot of these assets that are oversized, they're not always used to their full capacity, because they're there to meet that peak event. So, if there are certain classes of service that peak higher, that causes to oversize greater, they should contribute more to paying for the maintenance of that infrastructure. And finally, the fire component is very similar in nature to the peak component. It's important to remember that it's more than just hydrants when we're talking about fire protection. It's oversizing all the infrastructure to support the pressure needed to put out a fire, and the more densely populated an area is, so a commercial business center, they would require higher fire marshal requirements, higher pressures, and they should contribute higher to that fire component. More spread-out populations, residential developments will have lower fire flow requirements, lower pressure requirements based on the fire marshal, and they'll get slightly less cost allocated to them. So, it depends on the density of development. So, performing the analysis, on this slide, you'll see the result of the cost of service. Here, what we're looking at is a chart, which contains the bars. The bars represent each individual class's result of the cost of service, and really, what we're trying to do is to get the bar as close to the solid black line at the top of the chart. The solid black line represents 100% of cost recovery. Now, you'll notice that there are dashed lines around the solid black line, which we like to say represent the range of reasonableness. Usually, from an annual perspective, your budget's going to change a little bit. Sometimes, maintenance changes up and down from year to year, customer service billing changes year to year. We're going to have changes in usage behavior in our customer classes. Our folks will use more or less, depending on the weather, seasonalities, as well as the economic state. If we're going through a recession, or businesses picking up, different sectors of our customers will use differently. So, I like to say is that if we're close to the bullseye, not hitting the bullseye every year, we're doing really well, and that's why there's usually a range of reasonableness, because the bullseye moves every year, depending on the cost makeup of our revenue requirement. So, if we're within 5% plus or minus that 100%, we're doing really well. And last time, when we did the analysis, the commercial class was overpaying a little bit. Manufacturing irrigation were underpaying, so the strategy that we developed moved them towards cost causation, and it looks like now that we're checking in four years later, we're doing really well, and everybody's actually within that range of reasonableness of cost of service. So, at this point in time, I would not recommend any additional changes or modifications from the average of seven and a half percent that we talked about the background, and there's no need to do any additional interclass changes. Everybody's doing really well, and the strategy that we developed last time has been working. Definitely continue revisiting it next time a study is completed, but at this time, we're doing really well. On the sewer side, it's very similar. Here, there's two functions instead of five. We're looking at customer costs, again, very similar to the water utility, and those are the fixed in nature. They don't really change with the amount of flow or influent that each individual customer sends down the drain. Here, it's about 18% of total costs. Flow costs are those related to the influent going down the drain itself, the waste that needs to be treated and sent down to King County. Now, if you've ever seen rates or this analysis for other utilities, there might be other functions of service which are related to the waste itself, what kind of waste you send down the drain, but because we receive treatment services from King County, and King County assesses rates based on flow strictly to their customers, there's no other cost components to consider for cost allocation this time around. So, performing the analysis here, as we did last time, focused strictly on the single-family and non-residential classes of service, and again, last time, single-family was overpaying a little bit, so we tempered those adjustments last time around in the four-year strategy. So, now, the results are indicating we're almost right on, right on that bullseye for both of the classes and are doing really well. So, similar to the water utility, we're not proposing any additional modifications. The seven and a half percent increase would apply equally and proportionally to both classes of service. Again, revisiting next time, but no changes in addition to the overall average from the revenue requirement. Finally, on the stormwater side, here we have our classifications of service, really broken down between two components. The base component, it's a different name, but it's really meant to represent fixed costs that are not associated with stormwater mitigation. Here, these are administration, utility billing, again, postage, as I have used in the prior two utilities, a different name for customer type cost components. The second component is really broken down into two subsections. This is a use component related to water quality and water quantity, and this is basically any cost component that can help us. If a customer constructs any kind of mitigation onsite on their end, they can help the city save money. It could be related to retention, stormwater runoff, retention, or detention, is basically any kind of cost contribution that a customer can have on their end. Performing the analysis as well for this utility did look like we have made significant progress. Last time, we were quite a bit off, especially on the credit customer classes, our single-family and non-single-family standard charges were overpaying by a bit. Performing the analysis this time, we have been able to correct it over the four-year period, so we are doing really well. Again, very similar recommendation, no changes besides the average. And really with that, that gets us to the end. The big picture is the work that the council has done last time around has really solved the interclass allocation issues that we saw during that original study in 18, and we're doing really well, so our suggestion is to pass along the percentages from the revenue requirement to all classes of service, and we'll be back to you again in terms of next steps for the rate design, seeing if we need to make any small interclass changes. Do we need to raise the meter charges more than the volume rates? Or do we just keep it proportional as well? But overall, the utilities are doing well from a cost-of-service perspective. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
And with that, I'll turn it back to our deputy mayor to continue.
Thank you, Chair Baggett. Okay. So, this evening's agenda item for council discussion begins with Pay Equity Audit. The Equal Pay and Opportunity Act, Fall 2022, presentation presented by Director Martinson.
Good evening, Mayor, and Deputy Mayor and Council, Candace Martinson, Director of Human Resources and Risk Management with the city. And I have the presentation tonight for the Equal Pay Act. So, the background that you all received was originally in 1943. Washington first enacted the Equal Pay Act in an attempt to prohibit wage inequity among women. And on May 9th, 2019, House Bill 1696 updated Washington's existing EPOA. And so, there were some provisions that went into effect recently that impacted the city as an employer as it relates to our practices. So, I'm here to go through what those changes were and the voluntary consultation that we conducted with the Department of Labor and Industries related to the Equal Pay Act. So, just a little bit about the city and our classifications. So, we have 170-plus job titles, 470 full-time employees, or FTEs, and 38% staff with 10-plus years of service. And so, our breakdown of our representative groups, so this will be important to note as we go through the scope of this consultation that we went through. So, with 50% of the city being unionized, they are governed by RCW 4156, which is the Public Employees Collective Bargaining Rules. And so, those wages with those groups are mandatory subjects of bargaining. So, we sit down typically every three years with those groups and negotiate their wages. We also discuss their comparable agencies that we look at in order to do market analysis for those positions within those unions. And some of our unions have what is called binding arbitration, which essentially, a judge can determine if we unsuccessfully negotiated a contract, what those wages are for police commission staff, sergeants, and commanders. And with those groups, we've agreed to and negotiated those comparables within our negotiation process. And so, arbitrators will determine what agencies are comparable by choosing jurisdictions of comparable population, assessed valuation, FTE count. And parties usually need to develop a minimum of six to eight comparable agencies, with a typical maximum of 12 to 13. And so, as that relates to our union folks, it's pretty straightforward, but for 50% that are non-affiliated or unaffiliated, as we refer to them internally, we use the same methodology that we use for our unionized employees. We believe that it's a solid and fair methodology. So, what we look at is a 50-mile radius from the City of Auburn, and those cities with a population of 50% above and below the City of Auburn. So, just for rough numbers, I know that the population is higher in Auburn than 80,000, but just for quick math, we would look at cities with a population up to 120,000, down to 40,000 in that 50-mile radius. And then, we also use City of Kent because of the proximity to the City of Auburn, and they're actually larger than that metric. And so, for the discussion today, we're just going to discuss the process as it relates to unaffiliated wages. So, this is our Human Resources and Risk Management Department structure, just for a quick overview of the staff that we have that are dedicated to these efforts of compensation throughout the city. So, a lot of our recruitment coordinators deal with the entry-level wage negotiations with applicants. And then, all of our internal compensation studies are done by our Assistant Director of HR and Risk Management, and by myself. And this is just a quick overview of all of those areas, but as you can see, the labor classification and compensation is the main area we're going to be talking about today, as well as our employment programs. So, for the Equal Pay and Opportunities Act, this is a quick chart to show what employee rights are and job applicant rights are that we need to adhere to in compliance with our processes. So, this law is equal pay determined, not based on gender, and that job advancement opportunities within the City of Auburn are not based on gender. The free ability to discuss employees' wages with others, and access to salary or wage information upon a position or a promotion, protection from retaliation for entering into wage discussion negotiations or inquiring on wages. And then, for applicants, and this is very important to note, that we cannot ask for any wage or salary history on our application or when applying for a job. There's no requirement that they need that wage information to meet certain criteria in order to seek a wage through the City of Auburn, and that they have access to minimum wage or salary information of the new position, which we end up posting on all of our positions. So, when we went through this consultation, they reviewed our city personnel policies and practices, our pay scales, our job posting examples, and our online employment application. And so, that was reviewed for possible risks of noncompliance with the Equal Pay and Opportunities Act. And according to our policies, employees are compensated based on job grade or predetermined salary schedule, and receive step increases annually automatically, and that's not dependent upon a successful evaluation. And then, upon lateral transfer, an employee maintains their current compensation. Per our policies, if an employee is either exceptionally qualified or there is a high demand for people to fill the position, thereby increasing the market value of the positions, a salary step greater than the first step could be approved. And so, that was an allowable provision under the Equal Pay Act. During our consultation conference, we confirmed that to be qualified for a position, we would consider a candidate's education and prior experience, and determining compensation based on a business need, such as current market value, and qualifications, like I noted, education and experience, as well as having a seniority system are all permissible reasons for providing different compensation in our organization. Also, per our policy, our reclassification policy, this could entail an increase or a decrease in position grade due to the level of responsibilities tasked and duties of a position, which changes areas of emphasis and the level of skill as they relate to the current position. So, the good news is, is after our Human Resources Department went through the consultation... So the good news is, is after our Human Resources Department went through the consultation, we are in compliance. And so we have a report that we received from the Department of LNI that goes into further detail. But I'm here to highlight the areas that were included in the report for you. So to determine if there was a violation of the law, LNI considers similarly situated employees, any compensation differences based on gender, and have we created a systemic gender pay discrimination through either formal or informal process or practices. No, also to note, if we would have permissible job-related factors to justify a compensation difference or not. So that's some of the merit or education or experience or job market items that I noted before and that we, as the employer, bear the burden of of proof on why pay differences exist. So during our consultation conference, we talked about how candidates must meet the minimum qualifications, including education and experience to be considered for a position. And job qualifications fall under permissible requirements, providing different career advancement opportunities for our employees, so promotional opportunities. And we covered specifically internal promotional opportunities when positions are not posted, doing due to only having one internal candidate that's qualified. And although we're not required by this law to post all of our positions, we talked about the consultant, about the potential risks of complaints being filed against our organization if we did not have a competitive process created for job appointments. Okay, so I believe I already covered all of this. For open wage discussions, so typically in the past, employers would try and deter people from talking internally about their wages with other employees. And that is actually a prohibited provision under the Equal Pay Act. So what they will consider, LNI being they, would consider is whether the employer prohibited the employee from inquiring, disclosing, comparing or otherwise discussing their wages with other employees and whether the employer prohibited the employee from asking about their pay or lack of career advancement opportunities, whether the employee was discouraged from having open wage discussions because of formal or informal employment policies or practices, and whether the employer employee took an adverse action against the employee for having these wage discussions. So an example of that would be asking for a pay raise, asking their employer for the reason why they are paid at a specific rate, comparing wages with other employees, asking their employer to confirm what their pay rate is, and asking for wages owed. So there was one provision where we can prohibit folks from discussing employee wage information as part of their job duties. And that's for Human Resources and payroll staff discussing that with other city employees, not their own wages, but the wages of other employees. So retaliation protections under the Equal Pay Act. We cannot retaliate, discharge or discriminate against employees for exercising their right under the law. And so the protected rights include all of the previous items that I had discussed. But in addition to that, inquiring about with their employer formally or informally about an alleged violation of this law or communicating with any person, including coworkers, about the violation of the law, filing an Equal Pay and Opportunities Act complaint with LNI, testifying or otherwise participating in an administrative, judicial or other investigation or proceeding regarding an alleged violation of the law, informing another person about that person's rights. Retaliation means, in this case, taking an adverse action against an employee. And that would be terminating, suspending, demoting or denying a promotion or reducing an employee's hours or compensation and threatening to take any action based on the immigration status of an employee or an employee's family member or taking any other adverse action against an employee for exercising or attempting to exercise their protected rights under the law. So as I mentioned before, applicants have protections under this law as well. So we cannot ask an employee or, excuse me, an applicant for their salary history or require them to disclose their previous salary history to be considered for this new position. And the reason for that being is, is these types of questions have contributed to ongoing inequities that this law is trying to address. And so one thing that they did note was that an applicant can voluntarily disclose. However, we're trying to ensure that we're not asking questions in any way that it would make an applicant believe that they needed to disclose that. And then finally, the last provision, and I think government is pretty great about being transparent on our job applications, but providing the salary range for the position on our job applications and all of our posting and positions and advertisements for a position. And so this would apply also to an internal transfer or promotion, hence being the reason why we would want to have a competitive application process for those as well, even if we only had one internal applicant, so we could meet the provisions of the law by posting that job, the duties and the salary range of the position. So that's all I had to present on the Equal Pay Act. I don't know if there's any questions.
Thank you, Director Martinson. Council, do you have any questions? Councilmember Baldwin.
You'll get it. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Director Martinson, for this great overview and kind of recap of where we stand. I was curious, in that audit, was that specific just to looking at pay scale differences within gender? Or did that cover additional criteria from an equity standpoint like age, race, disability or other factors when looking at pay ranges or seeing if we were in compliance there?
Sure. So the audit asked for all of the city's personnel policies and practices, our jobs postings, our salary scales. And so because we bring folks in on a salary scale and we have a metric that describes that in our policies and we were able to show that based on our pay scales, that they didn't do an audit based on race or gender demographic information of anyone as they fall into that pay scale. That wasn't part of their audit specifically. It was more or less to look at the city's practices to see if there was a risk or potential that there could be an inequity. And we could obviously choose internally to look at those metrics as they relate to that and placement on there. But we we have not engaged with that as far as this audit has been done.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And so in those salary ranges, what would be the scale for sort of an acceptable difference between one person over another? Are we talking about something within five percent, which I think we saw, you know, even looking at the in our last piece of the presentation for rates, you know, above or below a certain line? So as they were doing comparisons there, what was acceptable and what would be considered sort of out of compliance for that?
So the way that our pay scales look is that they're based on classification and we have steps one through seven. And so typically, we look at the minimum qualifications for a position. And then we look at basically if you exceed those, that your placement falls then further on the step as you're brought in internally. So that's for external applicants. Internally, the promotional policy is set where you either move to step one of the higher grade or you get a minimum percentage wage increase with the promotion, whichever one is more advantageous for the employee that's getting the promotion. So I hope that answers your question a little bit to see the framework. But we have certain pay scales that have multiple jobs within that classification. And the way that we know that those pay scales are competitive is we do an external market analysis essentially on request by the employee and by the director if there is perception that they believe that they their pay scale that they're in is incorrect based on the market of other similar-sized cities within that population in fifty-mile radius and assessed valuation, kind of evaluation of other cities. And so the city has about thirteen jurisdictions that we look at. Sometimes some of those positions have comparable positions in other cities and sometimes they don't. And so in a situation where we can't find multiple comparable positions in other cities, then we would do like an internal equity analysis of similar work responsibilities within the city. So there's multiple ways to look at it. It's, I mean, it's fairly complicated based on the circumstances of the situation that we're looking into and the applicant, whether it's external or internal, and what policy they follow. So I hope that answers your question. But if you have any other clarifying questions, I can answer.
Yeah, I think I was looking at it more from the space of how would you know if there was someone whose allocation for their salary range was, you know, not meeting the targets or, you know, not in alignment with the competing markets, right? So how would you know if there was something that failed to be in that space of being equitable, right? From the methodology, so. Okay.
Do you have a response?
Well, I can respond to that. So if we if we used my classification, for example, Human Resources Director. And let's say I felt as though I wasn't paid competitively with the market of other Human Resources Directors in government. Then I would make a request and say I'd like a market analysis to be done. And so we would look at those thirteen comparable jurisdictions and hopefully all of them have an HR Director classification. And so we would basically compile all of those and we would say where is Auburn's wage placed in comparison of those thirteen jurisdictions? And so we typically look for, from a compensation philosophy, to be somewhere in the average of all of those agencies. And so if we're above that average, then I'm paid over market. If we're below that average, then I am paid under market. And then if there's a certain percentage that I'm under market by policy and practice, that I would then have a market adjustment to the next highest pay scale.
Any other questions, Council? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and great report, Director Martinson. I appreciate the city showing, you know, coming through with a clean analysis of the work that you do on this. I do have a question about the request for market analysis for an individual employee. Is for them to receive that analysis, is that a requirement of the Equal Pay and Opportunity Act? Or is this just the policy of the city?
It's the policy of the city.
I commend the city for that. That is really good policy. And it, I believe, you know, pay inequity is is issue that we live with in this country. And gender pay inequities, you know, we have an equal payday, right? And sometime in May where, you know, women are are earning that much less in May to compared to some of their male counterparts. And that's certainly not true in this city, so I just appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Council, any questions? I have a question. But first of all, I want to thank you, Director Martinson, for keeping us in compliance. That's a great feat. Appreciate it. My question, I'm going to try and articulate it as best as I can. So when when a new employee or rather a candidate, a new candidate that we've selected wants to join our city, asks for more than the average amount, what do we do at that point?
So by city policy, the Human Resources Department has the ability to bring in a candidate up to step three of the typically seven-step pay scale. So any authorization above a step three would go to the mayor. And we have a policy that has been recently updated with our practice, but we essentially take the minimum qualifications of the position. And then for each additional year of education and experience, we provide an analysis essentially to move that candidate up for eligibility for a higher step. I'll say that I've noticed in my four years that I've worked here that typically we would offer the initial step up to a step three based on that internal analysis in Human Resources that we had authorization from the mayor by policy to do. What I am finding in the competitive job market is, is there is an extreme difficulty in getting candidates at steps one through three on a pay grade. And so we've had a lot of counter negotiation that goes through the mayor for oversight and approval. And so Human Resources provides the analysis in order for her to support those decisions. It's not without some risk. If we could bring all candidates in at step one of the pay scale, ideally that would minimize risk. But in the real world, that's not how it works. And so we've identified, because the burden of proof is on the employer, we've identified a metric on how to do that internally so that we can ensure that it's happening consistently. However, we still could have somebody that will refuse to accept that higher offer. We have a practice that we won't offer the top step and we've adhered to that throughout my time, my four years here working with the mayor.
Council, any other questions? Councilmember Baldwin.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. From what you had just said, one thing kind of jumped out at me is that in the practices of having more candidates coming in looking for a higher starting point, as you've been having conversations with them around what they're looking for from a package approach, is there any information you can share as far as like the types of benefits that they are looking for, especially after the past two years of pandemic? So are there things that they're asking for that we don't have available today that we should be exploring as council? And we can maybe save that for another time if that's too out of scope for this presentation.
Well, I can just summarize generally. I think that the mayor and the director team have been pretty proactive to try and continue to revisit flexible work and telework for certain positions. However, I think there are some folks from the private sector that have expectations of remote teleworking options out of state or things like that that we cannot meet from a host of reasons. So we, but we have been trying to revise those policies and practices to be as generous as we can with still being able to provide coverage in the offices and service to our residents. So additionally, we have had some discussions on ways that we can be competitive in our wages. And so that's an annual process that I think the directors and the mayor and everyone is is interested in. So we have made some adjustments where we can in wages and benefits. And I know that that's been discussed through our biennial budget process as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Baldwin. Any other questions, Council? If not, thank you, Director Martinson. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Council, we'll move on to Resolution number five, six, eight, eight. And this resolution adopts the 2023 Community Block Grant Action Plan for Consolidated Plan Years of 2020 to 2024, presented by Director Jeff Tate. I guess Joy isn't there in that place right now. Welcome, Joy.
Thank you so much. Good evening. My name is Joy Scott. I'm the Community Services Manager here at Auburn and happy to be in front of you once again this evening. I am here tonight to talk about our Community Development Block Grant 2023 Annual Action Plan. I know that this presentation is well I know that this presentation is well-known to some of you who have heard this similar kind of presentation this time of the year for a number of years now. But I will go back for a little bit of background just so that everybody's on the same page as we work through it. So this evening, we are going to be talking about our Community Development Block Grant Fund. So this is money that we received directly from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. These figures that you see before you are a little bit different than the figures that we were talking about the last time that I presented in front of counsel. That's because these numbers represent our $2022 amounts for our general fund human services and for the Community Development Block Grant Program. So I'll go into a little bit more detail as we go through this presentation. But generally, our CDBG funds support a variety of purposes in the city, including our housing repair program, public facility ADA improvements, some public services and some economic development activities as well. So the Community Development Block Grant is an entitlement program and it provides annual grants on a formula basis to entitled cities to develop viable urban communities. That trigger is met for cities once they hit 50,000 population and then that city is able to decide if they want to become a direct entitlement city for the purposes of our community or if they would like to be part of the King County Consortium and pool their funds with King County to oversee with a little bit less project management on their side. The City of Auburn is a direct entitlement community, so we receive those funds directly and we also manage the program ourselves while King County oversees the home dollars that come from the Housing and Urban Development Department. So all of the projects that we fund with these dollars have to align with at least one of three of HUD's national objectives, be eligible under HUD's guidelines and benefit low and moderate income persons. We typically, at the City of Auburn, are only funding the national objective of a low to moderate income benefit. The other two national objectives don't typically apply in our community. There are a number of administrative requirements that come along with this program. You see me a few times a year talking about different elements of this. But the overarching document that guides our work for Community Development Block Grant is our five-year consolidated plan. So we are currently operating under the 2020 to 2024 Consolidated Plan that the council adopted in November of 2019. This plan is really where we have the majority of our in-depth community engagement work, a lot of our community outreach work. We hold public meetings when we're developing it and we adopt what we will be spending our CDBG dollars on broadly for the next five years. The annual action plans, which we're talking about this evening, lay out just for the following year how we plan to spend our entitlement. So the, every activity that's included in our action plan is guided by that five-year consolidated plan and incorporates, of course, some of that public participation as well, but is very much in line with what has been adopted as the strategic priorities for 2020 to 2024. I also come before you oftentimes to talk about our annual report, which is the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or CAPR. We also, through this program, have a number of administrative requirements to ensure that the dollars are being spent responsibly and that we are adhering with federal regulatory requirements related to our subrecipients, things like environmental reviews and lead mitigation. So I have some examples of eligible activities for Community Development Block Grant Funds. There are a list of activities that are broadly eligible for these funds. Oftentimes, though, it does come with a lot of caveats of how the funds need to be distributed or in what type of particular project we would be looking at. Some of the things that we take advantage of are, of course, our public services, which is basically just human services, which has a cap of 15% of our total annual allocation. Our home rehabilitation activities, economic development activities, microenterprise assistance. And we, of course, always set aside funding for program administration since there is a pretty heavy lift by staff to be able to oversee these funds coming into the city directly. As I mentioned, we have our housing repair program that's funded by our Community Development Block Grant Dollars. We also, in recent years, have funded eviction prevention or rent assistance programs, employment training, healthcare for under and uninsured Auburn residents, residential area ADA sidewalk improvements and fair housing testing and fair housing services. Noted on this slide are the three consolidated plan goals. You'll see that these are pretty broad. This is because as a consortium in King County, the, all of the entitlement communities and King County as a whole adopts the same consolidated plan goal language to ensure that we're working off of the same broad goals. You will see that some of these are a little bit lofty for the amount of funding that we receive directly as an entitlement community. But all of the, all of the activities that we fund should be working towards one of these three goals. The second goal of ending homelessness is much more related to the home dollars that King County receives than to our specific Community Development Block Grant. But overall, you'll see this language within King County's plan and of course, within the City of Kent, Federal Way, Bellevue and the joint agreement cities in King County as well. So just to give you a little bit of context for the annual action plan, you do have a draft of our 2023 plan in your packet this evening. I will say that the, the format that it is in is pretty clunky. That's because it's entered into HUD's database online and what you see is that downloaded, downloaded format from the database. Some things have a little bit of a hard time translating in that document, but it is a requirement of HUD that we show that we've posted that as it is downloaded from their database. So I've tried to lay out some of the data that's in there in a, in a way that's a little bit easier to, to see at a glance. So to give you a sense of our timeline for this year in drafting our 2023 plan, of course, in March to April of this year, we had our application process for both general fund and the CDBG public service funding for 2023 to 2024. I presented in that, on that in more detail at the October 10th council meeting. On October 22nd, we had our first public hearing at the Human Services Committee to hear input on proposed activities, what folks might like to see in the plan. And then we had our second public hearing on October 17th after the plan had been posted for 30 days. So our plan was publicly posted on September 16th, our draft plan. And in our September 30th Human Services Committee meeting, our committee recommended the CDBG-funded public service activities. You will have seen that in your October 10th presentation as well, but it is reiterated in this particular draft of the 2023 plan. So this particular slide, again, the formatting is a little bit confusing in the document, but this really matches up with the table that begins on page 2022 of the plan, laying out all of the activities that we plan to fund in 2023. We have a little bit of a challenging timeline with our Community Development Block Grant Funds. I know some of you are very familiar with this, but our, our program year for CDBG is January 1st to December 31st. It aligns very well with our budget year. It's aligned with the King County Consortium and all of our entitlement jurisdiction neighbors. Unfortunately, we typically don't receive our annual allocation amount from HUD until April of the year that we are in. So we don't expect to receive our 2023 award amount until April of 2023. We typically don't actually receive the funds in our line of credit until somewhere between July and November of that year. So we're always operating a little bit behind the curve in terms of actually being able to get the funding in the door. So one of the things that I will say is that part of the plan that you see in your packet alludes to contingencies. And that's because, as I said, there are some caps on the amounts that we're able to set aside for things like public services and planning and administration. We always estimate our annual amount, so we are estimating $615,000 for the 2023 program year. However, if we find out in April of 2023 that we are actually receiving $600,000, we'll need to adjust downward that public service allocation to ensure that we do not exceed our 15% cap. We, we could certainly budget less going into it, but it's been a priority of, of this council and within our consolidated plan to fund public services as much as possible within our CDBG allocations. So you will see some language within the plan of if our, if our allocation comes in higher or lower than anticipated, this is the resulting changes that we would make. So you'll see that we have $615,000 estimated for 2023 along with almost $24,000 of carry forward. This is in activities that were underspent. Oftentimes, it comes from our planning and administration dollars if we didn't fully bill staff time for that amount or if there were projects like our sidewalk projects that had a little bit more of a contingency estimated and the actual cost of the project came in slightly lower. This is usually recaptured amounts from a number of activities in the $5,000 to $8,000 range that we kind of cobble together and plan for the following year to fully expend. The Solid Ground Housing Stability Project is our public service allocation for 2023. This is the recommended project from our Human Services Committee vote on September 30th and that was included in your packet on October 10th as well. It provides time-limited rental assistance to Auburn residents paired with supportive services to support homelessness prevention and increased housing stability. We have funding set aside for sidewalk accessibility improvements. These provide ADA improvements in low to moderate income residential areas of Auburn. We typically prioritize our lowest income areas for identifying opportunities and our Public Works Department oversees the contracting and carrying out of these projects. We also have a set aside for our housing repair program. This is a little bit lower than you typically see in other years, but that's because during COVID, we had less demand for our housing repair program and we also were able to go into fewer homes during that time because of restrictions for, for our public health and because of program restrictions in order to keep both staff and clients safe. So we have a little bit of funding remaining that we are still spending down and this is to ensure that we're not building up funding that we're not spending in housing repair. And then you'll also see that we have funding set aside for microenterprise assistance. This is something that's really exciting to me and my team and our economic development team, who we've been working very closely with. They've been hearing a need in the community from small businesses to have some additional support and to have both technical assistance and, you know, maybe explore the opportunity of having grant funding available for those small businesses as well. Microenterprise would be five or fewer total staff, including the owner. So we are going to be setting aside money through an RFP process to support small businesses in the community as well. So the next steps for this funding is that we have resolution 5688, which is in your packet as well, scheduled for the November 7th, 2022 council meeting. I'm happy to take any questions about the plan or any of our planned expenditures for 2023.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Counselor member Baldwin.
Thank you. That's a great presentation and this may be a silly question, but I figure it never hurts to ask. For the allocation that we get every year as we're, you know, waiting for it pending, is that based off of our population size or how is that determined for what we're going to be receiving as a city?
Yeah, it's not a silly question at all, actually. It's an excellent question because we have had a lot of variation over the last four years of the amount that we've received. So we're what's known as a Formula A grantee. 25% of our formula allocation is based on the share of population. 50% is based on poverty rate and 25% is based on proportion of overcrowded housing units that HUD collects. So we do see some shifts every year based on that. And then, of course, it's also just based on the overall budget for the Community Development Block Grant Program that is set at the federal level. So we received almost $600,000 this year, but about $651,000 last year. So a pretty big shift. A large portion of that was that there was less funding budgeted for CDBG at a federal level, but we also saw some reductions in the rate of poverty and also the rate of overcrowded housing units in Auburn. So we do see some shifts from year to year based on that.
Wonderful, thank you.
Counsel, any questions?
Joy, thank you very much for your presentation, but I do have one question. Can you elaborate a little bit on the administrative cap, the 20%?
Absolutely, on how we use those dollars or?
Yeah, please.
Sure. So HUD allows us to set aside up to 20% of our annual allocation to go towards what's called administration and planning. It can be used for a variety of purposes. We use our admin and planning dollars to support things like our housing repair program coordinator's staff time. So our technician who does the repairs will usually bill directly to that project. So where you see that housing repair set aside, it goes towards that cost. But for things like accepting applications for the program, verifying homeowner eligibility, overseeing some of the data management, our database work for the housing repair program, and also the staff time for things like preparing the strategic plan, overseeing our contracts for things like fair housing services and the housing stability program and the staff time that goes into managing all of those other pieces of the program.
Thank you, that makes sense. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Appreciate your, your presentation.
Thank you.
Counsel, at this point, we will move into the finance and technology and economic development discussion items. Back to you, Chair Baggett.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Well, we have four, four more ordinances to review here, proposed ordinances. And the next one is ordinance number 6879 and that will be Director Thomas.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, Mayor and Counsel. I'm back again to talk about budgets. And the focus of this presentation is really to talk about this preliminary budget that we have now published and each of you should have received last Monday. And how we prepared this was really a direct result of our council workshop meetings that we had towards the mid and end of September. So we took all of that information, all the information that we presented to you. We moved forward and we compiled a preliminary budget. So this presentation is just to go high level over really the items that we've already presented to counsel and the highlights of the preliminary budget itself. I also include the 2023 property tax levy as part of this title only because we have a requirement for a public hearing prior to the adoption of the budget and prior to the adoption of the ordinance. Those are, of the budget ordinance itself, those are two ordinances that require public hearings. And so that is why I include this as part of the title. So if we move forward, this is our condensed calendar of the things that we still have to do moving forward. I am going to combine, if it is okay, with Deputy Mayor, items B through E on our, our finance committee agenda only because all of these items all roll up into that ordinance 6879, which is the preliminary budget itself. So within this preliminary budget, we have several ordinances that roll into it. So it flows much better as one presentation. And as I move through the presentation, I will highlight the areas up within the preliminary budget where there's additional ordinance and council action that will be required. So that is what we're here for tonight. The only other item on here that I won't be talking about specifically, we've already heard from our outside presenter with FCS Group, and that is the utility rate review. Just a reminder, there will be one more presentation in November by FCS and our preliminary budget for our water, sewer and storm utilities are all based on the assumption that the recommendations of the FCS Group are adopted. So if those don't move forward, then there would be adjustments in the, in the budget as well. After tonight's presentation, we are going to move forward. I'd mentioned those public hearings. I'd mentioned those public hearings. We have our, we'll have our first public hearing on the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four biennial budget on November seventh, as well as a public hearing on the property tax levy. Then on November fourteenth, we'll come back for our third and final presentation from FCS Group on the utility rate study. And then, assuming there are no other questions or concerns or issues from council, we'll move forward with our final public hearing on the two thousand twenty, the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four biennial budget, and then continued adoption of all that related legislation. So there are still five outstanding ordinances that all go together with this one preliminary budget document. So just jumping right in with the general fund, general fund expenditures, this is really the meat of the preliminary budget. So we are asking, or proposing in the preliminary budget, ninety-eight point one million dollars in expenditures in the general fund in two thousand twenty-three and one hundred and one point four million dollars in expenditures for the general fund in two thousand twenty-four. And just to look at the pie chart a little bit more closely, to add a little bit more context, pointing out, I think I've mentioned before, we've got public works at five percent and streets at five percent. That is actually both under the public works department. Public works is the engineering portion, and the streets is the maintenance and operation portion of public works. Not to be confused with the maintenance and operation element also that is embedded within the parks department as well. If you want to see a breakdown of FTEs, I think I had sent the FTE breakdown in an individual email to the full council, but there is, that breakdown is on page forty-five of the preliminary budget, so you can see the breakdown not only by fund within the general fund, but then the number of FTEs by all the other departments citywide as well. And for the general fund, we are asking, we're requesting for three hundred and seventy-one general fund employees in two thousand twenty-three and three hundred and seventy-two FTEs in two thousand twenty-four. And that second pie chart on the right is very closely related to the number of FTEs because, as you can see, between the salaries and wages and the personnel benefits, that accounts for, those people account for fifty-four percent of our total general fund costs. So they are, they're a big drivers overall. All the other items on there are pretty self-explanatory, except for maybe the inter-funds payments for service at thirteen percent. And just a reminder, those reflect all of our payments to our internal service funds, so that is IT, our IT services, our workers' comp fund, our facilities, our multimedia fund, and our equipment replacement and reserve fund. So to review, because we did ask for, we did embed a few new programs into our preliminary budget this year. To recap, there were sixteen new ongoing general fund program requests that accounted for thirteen new FTEs. Three of those FTEs are frozen. They are specific to the patrol, the police patrol expansion project, which we have a six-year deployment window, so those FTEs would, were asking to be frozen until we get into the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six biennium. The total impact on the general fund for two thousand twenty-three for these programs is one point one million dollars, and then the two thousand twenty-four impact for these new programs is one point five, just a little under one point five million dollars. These costs are net of any new revenues that these programs generate, or any expenditure savings or cuts that we made in other areas and reallocated towards these programs. So when you look at, I'm going to pull out one item, for example, the second from the bottom, the FTE park maintenance worker one. The general fund impact is only nine hundred and ninety dollars in two thousand twenty-three and seven thousand five hundred and sixty in two thousand twenty-four. That's because we realized savings in our temporary employee expenditure line from two thousand twenty-two. We reduced that line item and are asking to increase for a permanent position in this permanent line item. There are also some one-time requests that we had presented to council, and that accounts for thirteen one-time requests. We had some excess fund balance and reserves as we are projecting coming out of two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, and now at the end of two thousand twenty-two, and we are proposing to use that excess fund balance that we've accumulated over the last couple of years, plus some additional REIT money, which was also higher than we had initially budgeted for during two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two. And that is how we plan to fund those one-time requests. So this is where I need to talk about our major revenue sources. This is the subject of one of our public hearings. You can see property tax as number one on here for both two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four because it is our most significant revenue source for the general fund. We are budgeting twenty-four million dollars in two thousand twenty-three and twenty-four and a half million dollars for property tax in two thousand twenty-four. If you recall, we are limited to the one percent growth each year, so we did incorporate that at one percent growth into the budget for twenty-three and twenty-four. I'll talk in more detail on how we calculate the total property tax calculation in the following slides, but just knowing that we did take that one percent into consideration when we built the budget. For sales and use tax, we are budgeting twenty point six million and twenty-one million dollars in twenty-three and twenty-four respectively. That is a slight decrease from what we had budgeted, or what we're expecting to see in two thousand twenty-two, only because we're anticipating that recession and just trying to be conservative with our revenue estimates for sales and use tax. And then business and utility tax, we budgeted twenty-one million and twenty-one point three million dollars in twenty-three and twenty-four respectively. Of that twenty-one million dollars and the twenty-one point three million dollars, about five point five to five point six million of that is BNO tax specifically, so it's that new BNO tax element. The remaining piece is our utility, our utility taxes that we assess both on external utilities, so electric, natural gas, telephone, cable, solid waste. And then the others are our internal utility taxes that we charge, which are our water, sewer, and storm utilities. So I'm going to talk a little bit more about property tax. It is kind of complex, and I think it always is really good to kind of revisit how we calculate it and how property tax, property tax that we pay doesn't necessarily always come back a hundred percent to the city. So we are limited to that one percent growth factor. There is a caveat that if inflation, which they call the implicit price deflator number, is less than one percent, we actually have to take the lesser of two. Fortunately, this year, inflation exceeded one percent, so we don't have to take into consideration the implicit price deflator this year for our property tax ordinance. And we also, in addition to the one percent growth, we get to levy new construction. So that's new construction that came onto the assessed valuation and the tax rolls in the prior year that we hadn't, if it came on in two thousand twenty-two, we didn't get to tax it in two thousand twenty-two, so we get to get, pick up that tax value than in the, in two thousand twenty-three in the future year. For about every, and this is again looking at two thousand twenty-two figures only because we don't have finalized assessed valuations from the county yet. We won't have those really until the very end of November, so we're really working on, they send us updated valuation numbers almost daily. So this is information based on, as of Wednesday last week, the most updated valuation, but because we don't have a finalized AV and what other districts are levying for two thousand twenty-three, this dollar, the breakdown of the dollar bill that you see is based on the two thousand twenty-two property tax division. So of every, for every dollar that a property owner pays in property tax, thirteen cents comes back to the city of Auburn. So in two thousand twenty-two, thirty-eight cents went back to the school district, twenty-two cents goes to the general fund, or to the state's general fund. We receive thirteen, thirteen cents, nine cents goes to King County, one cent goes to Sound Transit, and seventeen cents is a wide variety of several junior taxing districts that have boundaries within the city of Auburn. So that is going to be ordinance six, eight, eight, zero, which the council will need to adopt for property tax. We need to adopt that ordinance prior to November thirtieth, and we will have the public hearing set for November seventh. And some interesting information that we're getting right now from the county, again, these are just preliminary numbers, but the assessed valuation for the city of Auburn has increased twenty-one and a half percent over two thousand twenty-two. So we started, we, we are at seventeen point five billion dollars in assessed valuation for the city of Auburn. And why this number is so significant is that last year, when I was doing this presentation for our two thousand twenty-two tax, we were talking about eight and a half percent increases year over year, which we hadn't seen in a very long time since pre-two thousand ten. And so to see those eight and a half percent increases were pretty significant. So to talk about a twenty-one and a half percent increase for two thousand twenty-three is a pretty significant increase. The total one percent levy increase will be two hundred and thirty-eight thousand. We are estimating two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in that new construction portion that I talked about. And I'm going to walk through that calculation, that chart in the bottom, to kind of show you how we overall get to the bottom number that we're going to be levying when we submit our levy calculation to the county. So our two thousand twenty-two property tax levy was twenty-three point eight million dollars. We get to add one percent to that, that's the maximum we can add, so that comes to two hundred and thirty-eight thousand. So our two thousand twenty-three levy is set to, is estimated to be twenty-four point one million dollars. But we get to, we get to levy that new construction piece, which is a one-time, it'll get rolled into our assessed valuation in future years. So it's a one-time pull on that new construction, and that's an additional two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. And then right now, the county is estimating that we have some refund, levy refund miscellaneous type property tax money that is due to us in twenty, for two thousand twenty-three at sixty-seven thousand. That number can fluctuate anywhere between zero, and I've seen it be as high as ninety thousand dollars. We will not have a finalized number until we get into November. So for budgeting purposes, we're relying or estimating on twenty-four point four million dollars in property tax. We do not put that full amount into the budget because there are delinquent property taxpayers, so we usually budget about ninety, ninety-eight and a half to ninety-nine percent of that total twenty-three amount to put into our budget because that, we're not going to receive one hundred percent. I'm going to pause there because property tax is so confusing and it can be complicated. Are there, does the council have any questions about that calculation?
Any questions for council? Council member Baldwin.
Thank you, Chair Baggett. The twenty-one point five percent valuation honestly seems so much higher than the eight percent that it brings more concern than excitement from a effects-to-the-city standpoint. So when I see a percentage like that, I'm not thinking, how does that increase our revenue? But how's that going to impact our residents, right? What's that going to mean on the flip side for people being able to, like you said, pay their property taxes even? Can you speak to that at all?
Sure. So if you look at that last bullet point that I have there, when assessed valuation increases so much greater than that one percent we're actually able to levy, it actually decreases the dollar per thousand in property taxes that property owners are paying. So in two thousand twenty-two, and this is just for the city of Auburn's portion of property tax, not for your full property tax bill, but a dollar sixty-six per thousand is what a property tax, or a property owner was paying in city of Auburn tax. It's projected to decrease down to just a little less than a dollar forty per one thousand. So the affordability of your property tax bill doesn't necessarily grow with inflation or with the, with assessed valuation because the dollar per thousand does decrease because the most we can increase is that one percent. So, and then there's a funny thing where if your property value, but if your property did increase in value greater than the average, then you might carry a little bit more of the overall burden, but if your property value didn't increase as quickly as all of the other properties in the city, then your property tax, even though your AV increased, your liability of the overall piece of the pie actually decreases a little bit. So it's one of those things we have to back into. The assessed valuation increasing isn't so scary from an affordability standpoint as it is really maybe more a longer terms sustainability for both the city and for residents.
Thank you for that.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions from council? This is always a heavy lift time of the year for finance, so I really want to appreciate all the work that your department has gone into for this. Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Moving on, now, did you cover sixty-eight, eighty as well?
I have, I have several more pieces to cover. I just wanted to pause on that, on the property tax calculation piece.
Okay, very good.
Yep.
So we'll move into ordinance sixty-eight, eighty now.
Yep. We're actually going to kind of go back and forth. We're kind of bouncing around a little bit. So this is actually going to be...
It's all related, right?
Yeah, so this will be sixty-eight, eighty-eight, but it also goes back to sixty-eight, seventy-nine, which is also the overall biennial budget. So this is our capital project budget summary, and this is all of our capital projects that we've proposed. This doesn't include just governmental capital, but this also includes the capital of our proprietary funds. So water, sewer, storm, airport are our primary proprietary funds that are contributing to this, to this pie chart. Our ordinance sixty-eight, eighty-eight is the six-year capital financing plan, so it identifies, it's us looking forward, what are our future capital needs over the next six years, and how are we going to fund the, all of those needs over this, over the six years. The first two years of that six-year capital plan, so twenty-three and twenty-four, is incorporated into the biennial budget process. The total twenty-three, twenty-four capital budget totals ninety-eight point two million dollars. So even though we're asking council to adopt the capital piece that is embedded in the biennial budget, we're asking them, asking you also to adopt that six-year capital plan at the same time. So how that breakdown works, we've got forty-eight percent of this ninety-eight point two million dollars is non-governmental, so that's water, sewer, storm, and airport, which is forty-seven million dollars. So forty-seven million of that non, that totals forty-seven million dollars, and that is mostly funded with bond funds. We did a two thousand twenty bond fund issue for our utility systems, and this is just us spending down a lot of those projects we had identified as part of that bond issue in two thousand twenty, as well as money that we have set aside through our rate study analysis to set, and set money aside for future capital replacements. Thirty-four percent of our total capital projects are for our transportation needs. That's, that totals, totals thirty-three point four million dollars over the biennium, and that is for arterial streets, our local street preservation and our arterial street preservation programs. I'm going to talk about funding sources on the next slide, which is also an important topic. And then general capital improvements makes up eighteen percent. That's seventeen point eight million dollars over the biennium, and that includes everything else that we do, and capital nature, capital and nature in the city. So we've got park development projects, there's also our debt service, we have some debt service components in there, our Auburn Arts and Culture Center, our golf course driving range, which was on the new program request list that we saw a couple of slides previously, our sidewalk repair program, repair program, as well as our facility master plan program for phases two, three, and four, that was also one of those new items that was on the one-time program requests a couple of slides back. There's many, many more items, those were just the most noteworthy and the most significant over the next two years, and that's why I included them there. So this is how we fund all of those capital projects. This does not reflect, the way we slice the revenue sometimes can look differently depending on how we're looking at the money. This reflects the money that we currently have and we expect to get, and how we're going to fund the current projects. This isn't necessarily reflect the new money that we expect to get in twenty-three, twenty-four. So this just says, taking into account all of our current resources plus new resources, how are we going to spend the money on the projects that we have in our six-year plan? So forty-six percent of our funding is fund balance, but remember that a lion's share of these projects are for those water, sewer, storm funds. We are relying on bond money, bond proceeds primarily from two thousand twenty as well as fund balance, money that we've been setting aside over the years for system improvements and system maintenance. Twenty-two percent of our capital funding is grants. Most of these grants, of the twenty-one point five million dollars in grants that Most of these grants of the twenty-one point five million dollars in grants that we are using over the biennium, sixteen point one is actually for our governmental projects. So most of that money, Public Works is really, really good at securing some really good grant funding to fund a lot of those street, arterial street and street preservation programs. ARPA does account for a four point two million dollars. That goes across, four point two million dollars of that grant funding is from ARPA funds that we are dedicating towards our capital improvement program. And then utility and sales tax, even though it only makes up three percent of this overall pie chart, I do want to call it out because this is where we have a lot of big decisions that we've asked council to consider over the last couple of months. One is that point one percent sales tax that we estimate to generate three point seven million dollars over the biennium. That is an ordinance that council has already adopted at the very beginning of October. But there is one other piece to that transportation benefit district planning to properly fund our streets and arterial street preservation program. And that is increasing our utility tax rate on our city utilities by an additional one and a half percent. And that is ordinance six eight eight two. And that increase is estimated to generate two and a half million dollars over the biennium, an additional two and a half million dollars over the biennium to fund those transportation projects. And we already have, we already have funding with the one percent utility tax on all of our utilities that we contribute to those, to those programs. So this is just an additional to that, to that piece. Any questions about the capital projects before I move along?
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Chair Baggett. Jamie, can you explain to me what the proprietary funds is?
Those are, those, those are the funds that are business-like in nature. So our governmental funds are those that are supported primarily through taxing sources. And that's our general fund. Our proprietary funds are supported strictly through user fees. So our water, sewer, storm utilities, our airport, our cemetery, those are all funds that don't use tax dollars to, to support them. They are fully supported by the user fees and the users of the system.
Any other questions from council? Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation.
I've got, I've got more. So it's going to get even better, I promise. So the updates to the reserve policies was another also big component that we had asked the, the council to consider as part of the twenty-three, twenty-four biennium. The actual financial policies as it relates to our reserve policies are a part of our budget and they are in the preliminary budget. They're on pages sixty-four through sixty-five. We actually have several pages of financial policies. But six pages sixty-four through sixty-five relate specifically to the reserve requirements. And the four items highlighted here are really the, the significant changes that we, that we had asked council to consider. And that was setting a maximum general fund fund balance of twenty percent. So anytime the general fund hits twenty percent or more, we would automatically transfer that money to the cumulative reserve fund. Right now, there isn't a maximum target established in there. But we would like to make sure that whenever that general fund fund balance does reach a certain limit, that we are, that we are segregating it from the rest of the, the general fund. We want to increase the cumulative reserve fund target that is currently five to ten percent and increase that from eleven to thirty-six percent, which is the chart that you see on the left. That's the impact of increasing that reserve policy from five to ten percent to eleven to thirty-six percent. And then we identified an additional category for the uses of cumulative reserve funds, which would be for capital programs and one-time uses. Currently, that, we don't, we haven't explicitly set anything aside necessarily for capital programs and one-time uses. And then we want, we amended the equipment replacement targets to be more in line with our actual needs. Right now, the language is a little bit clunky. It talks about depreciation. We don't really like to budget based on depreciation because that's more of an accounting term, not a budgeting term. So we, we changed the language to be more in line with our actual capital expenditure, our historical capital expenditures and our future needs. So with that, we've presented a preliminary budget that actually meets all of those, all of those updated reserve policy requirements. Our general fund at the end of two thousand and twenty-four is projected to end at ten percent, ten percent, a ten percent target. Our cumulative reserve fund at sixteen percent. And all of the other funds also meet their target requirements. I did add solid waste with a little asterisk because it is the only fund that doesn't meet our funding level requirements at the end of two thousand and twenty-four. That was by design. And with the rate study that we have in place, the council adopted a solid waste utility rate study, rate increase in mid-two thousand and twenty-one. And those rate increases, once we get into two thousand and twenty-five, will have that fund balance up to its ten percent target reserve. We had intended when we switched over to the waste management contract, the new waste management contract, we had intended to spend down some of our reserves so we could stagger out those rate increases over a longer period of time rather than hitting customers with one or two really large increases at one time. So we, to stagger those increases, we planned to eat into the fund balance a little bit. So that was a strategic decision that we made to spend down that fund balance. And we will eventually slowly build that back up. But that was to kind of soften those increases back in two thousand and twenty-one. So these are just high-level numbers. This is our two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four biennial budget in millions. So the chart to the right is our general fund and all other funds lumped together in that right column. You can see our ending fund balance for the general fund at the end of two thousand and twenty-three is budgeted to be nine and a half million dollars. And by the end of two thousand and twenty-four, ten million dollars. The expenditures, I mentioned this in the beginning of the presentation, that we're asking budget authority from council for is ninety-eight point one million dollars for the general fund in two thousand and twenty-three and a budget authority of a hundred and one point, one hundred and one point four million dollars in two thousand and twenty-four. The left column kind of summarizes really those driving factors, like what is going on in our revenues and our expenditures and, and what is driving our projections. Our average expenditures increased over the biennium six point nine percent. So this is comparing the two thousand and twenty-two amended budget with what, where we expect to end two thousand and twenty-four. Those increases are really driven by salaries and benefits. So whereas the total cost increased six point nine percent, five point seven percent of that increases was directly attributed to salaries and benefits. We also had a large increase in our internal service fund costs, which we talked about all of those drivers during the council workshop. A lot of times we expect to see a large increase in the first year of the biennium because we have a delayed catch-up and how we allocate those internal service fund costs back to the general fund. So we had a, a little bump in two thousand and twenty-three. For revenues, we are projecting some increases, but that's off, those are offset by some big decreases as well that we're budgeting for. Our property tax increases, we're expecting to increase about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars on average each year over the biennium. That goes back to that property tax calculation that I showed you with our one percent plus new construction. Our utility tax increases, we expect to receive about an additional two hundred thousand dollars each year over the biennium. And then our B and O tax, we'll actually, we budgeted at five point three million dollars for each year. And this, two thousand and twenty-three will be the first year that we receive a full year's worth of B and O tax from all of the businesses that are required to report and pay B and O tax to the city. Those increases are healthy, but they are offset by a two point four million dollar decrease over the biennium. So we are budgeting for about a two point seven million dollar decrease in that first year due to a recession and then with a slight recovery in two thousand and twenty-four. So overall, the net, that net decrease over two years is two point four million dollars. If it ends up not being as significant, then that's great. Otherwise, you know, if that, if those numbers are even less, if the recession is deeper and longer than we had expected, then we will be coming back to council sometime in twenty-three and twenty-four to make adjustments as necessary. I mentioned this on the previous slide, our, because I, I feel like these are crucial components to really illustrating the, that what we're presenting is a sustainable budget over the biennium and beyond. Our estimated cumulative reserve fund balance is sixteen and a half million dollars at the end of two thousand and twenty-four. And our general fund balance is ten million dollars at the end of two thousand and twenty-four. So I think we talk about all the components, all the drivers that we took into consideration into the budget, but just highlighting that at the end of two thousand and twenty-four, we aren't ending anywhere near the red, that we are, we are planning for the future and we are planning for the next biennium when we present this budget to the council. Next steps, our next steps list is getting shorter and shorter. The next time we meet will be for the public hearings. We'll have our final utility rate presentation from FCS group. And then on November twenty-first, we'll have our final public hearing and then hopefully the adoption of all that budget-related legislation.
So by the time we get to ordinance sixty-eight eighty-eight, we should have a complete package, right?
Well, the package is hopefully complete. We can go home and celebrate once you've adopted sixty-eight eighty-eight.
I hear that. Any other questions from the council? Okay, with that, I do thank you for your presentation. With that, I will turn it back over to our deputy mayor.
Sorry. Thank you, Chair Baggett. Counsel, we have come to the end of our council study session. This meeting is now adjourned.